I'd like to welcome everybody to the September the 21st, 2020 work session of the Limestone County Commission. Under public comment, we have Ms. Amy Fiskus, if you don't mind, just come right up here to the microphone and explain what you got here.
I'm gonna have to take it down, is that okay?
That's fine.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Amy Fiskus and I work with a company called Valora. We are in the Space and Rocket Hall of Fame. This product right here is shared with NASA. It just came out this year. It's been FDA. No matter what you've got or what you've looked at, no one else is FDA tested. We are FDA tested for the RNA viruses. They chose to test a MS2 because it's a hard-shelled virus and a hard-shelled virus is harder to kill than the coronavirus. They're not letting anyone actually test it. Trust me, we begged to test it, but in one minute, it kills 99% of any pathogens in this room in one minute. In 15 minutes, it kills 99.99 and in 30, it's 99.9999 and at one hour, it is a six log. So it's destroying everything from all the pathogens to all the viruses to bacteria to MRSA staff, the flu, anything that comes through it. And it's 100% safe. A flea could be laying over there and it would not phase him. So it's very safe. It's going into hospitals all over the world. It's going into school systems. We've done several schools myself and they're doing schools and courthouses and all kinds of things and doctors' offices all over the United States because of our testing. It is going for FDA approval, but it takes a while to get that. We fall behind a virus that's getting some kind of shot right now. So this is unbelievable and if you have them, then you have a lot more safety. You know, you may still wear your mask or whatever because the government is kind of pushing you to do it, but you'll know your people are safe and the people coming in are safe too. So that is what I'm... I think I gave you all a packet with some of the testing in it and...
It was all in your mailbox.
It was in your mailbox and I would love to talk to anyone that would like to talk with me. I would be glad to sit down with you and explain it all. It's a great, great product. Our company has been doing R&amp;D on it through several different ones over the last 10 or 15 years. Like I said, we're in the space foundation for it. This technology is on the space station, but we have moved it way ahead from what they needed. So I would...
It's on the space station, but it hasn't been FDA approved yet?
It's on the... It has to be. They've never approved any kind of air unit for FDA. When they tested us and they got that six log in one hour, they were so shocked that they tested it again because they could not believe they had seen anything like this in their lives.
Can you give a brief summary of how it acts? Is it ozone or is it...
This one does have ozone, but most... You can get the ones that don't. It has an active tech, an active pure, and that's the part of it that's in the space station. It has an active pure honeycomb. You can see the blue in it that where air comes in, it creates a lot of things like hydroxyls, hydrogen peroxide and all kinds of things like that. There are three patents on it internationally and those are the killing agents. They kill all the pathogens, they kill viruses, they kill everything. It is in... We used a earlier model of this to clean up the Pentagon after 9/11. They were going to be out for six to nine months and we cleaned it up in a week and a half and so we have them there. We have them in the 9/11. It's in the Liberty Bell Museum. They're in hospitals, schools, everything all over the United States. Canada has just ordered them to go in all their hospitals, so has Italy and so has Brazil. So it's wonderful because there's low maintenance on it. It's going to be killing all the time and it literally, it does not filter the air. It goes... It's the only one in the world. Everything else out there, we call it air sucks. It goes out into the air, it creates everything it's going to create in the air. It's creating it on the bottoms of your shoes right now. When the hydroxyls leave the machine, when I turn it on, it literally leaves the machine at 1,200 feet per second. It's just that all the way the FDA said to our company, they couldn't believe it because literally when you turn it on, it's like boom. And you know, to get one minute, get 90%, it just inundates everything and it's a constant kill after that. So it's literally sanitizing 24 hours a day, seven days a week from then on. And it just runs completely, you know, like you would run your refrigerator or something, just runs constantly. It will do... One unit will do 3,000 square feet because we're not filtering. If you were trying to filter that air, you couldn't get it to it. If you were trying to filter it, that virus is so small, it would go through the filter and come out the other side. If you fog a room or if you spray a room, the first person that walks into the room contaminates it and they contaminate everything in it because it gets through the air. But because this one is killing everything in the air and on all the surfaces and then it's a constant sanitize, you don't have that problem. You don't have to worry about cleaning up a room after somebody left and then waiting for the next person to come in and contaminate it again. And compared to the pricing, it's very reasonable. It will run for years.
I don't have the packet in front of me. What's that machine right there cost?
I think I put it in your packet.
Yeah, but I don't have my packet, so what does it cost?
You're getting a good price on it. You're getting... They retail for $1,500. You're not paying anywhere near that. You're paying my cost.
We're paying $75 apiece.
I wish.
So what's the price?
I think it was five, it was five, I said my own was dead. Right at five, $600.
Yeah, between five and 600 and...
They come in packages.
They come in packs, so you buy them in packs to get better pricing. And now I'll never be able to retail to anybody in Athens. Thank you very much. I'll remember that on your birthday.
It's all right.
It's all rolled in that package on there.
I am doing this right now at my...
I hope that you gave the Brazilian government and the Italian government the same price that you're going to give us.
Unfortunately, I didn't. That's our company that did that, but literally, they're worth every penny. We've been selling them for years for the same price as this new model is getting. When you figure there are four years of very extensive R&amp;D and we pay for all that testing, FDA charges us to test them, you know, and then we have to go through all of the money we have to pay to get them, to get it to that point because they've never done anything like that. So they have already started it, so it's amazing. It will be there and there's nothing like it. You can't buy anything on the market. If they say they have it, you better check it because they don't have the testing or the patents to prove it. So I think it would be a good thing. I'm doing this for people in Athens and for businesses and schools and stuff because I want us to be safe. I want our town to be safe. And I'm sitting there one day and I'm looking at people in my company that are taking, that live in small towns all over the United States and they're literally getting it in all the businesses and all the restaurants and all the municipal buildings and they're in a safe zone. We can put a piece of... We can put up a thing that says, "When you enter this building, if it's in it, you're in a safe zone. You're safe here." So. Any more questions?
That's good.
You got any, Darrell?
No.
You said 1,200 feet per second.
1,200 feet and that's just one.
Did it electrocute?
It is, it is not. Like I said, some people ask me, "How does it work?" And I'll say, "Well, tell me what's in it that makes it work." And I'll say, "Do you have the formula for Coca-Cola?" Because you know, when you have patents like that and they're being protected at all costs, literally, everything is protected because they know what they've got and...
Yeah, Ben, we stuck a folder in each one of y'all's mailboxes. It's got all of the... It'll have all the information and all the technology and everything behind it. Just look in your mailbox and get back to office.
I mean, like I said, it's in the long run, it's going to be better for y'all to do this than do anything else you're doing because you're doing something that is proactive as opposed to just coming behind and trying to clean something.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any more questions? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming out. All righty. First on thing, we got any more public comment anywhere?
Yes, sir.
First thing on the agenda is resolutions to orders. It'd be an approved resolution to designate the Athens Senior Center at 912 West Prior Street as a temporary courthouse annex to accommodate judicial duties and court proceedings and that will be where they can strike juries for our courthouse doesn't have a big enough area to spread everybody out, so that's what that's for. Any other discussion with that? All right. No more discussion with that. Under contracts, agreements and grants, first thing on here will be to approve the following leases at the Sheriff's Office for annual rent of $1 each. It will be two Chevy Traverses with VIN numbers listed there in front of y'all. Any discussion with that? All righty. Second on here will be to approve the Alabama Department of Youth Services long-term detention subsidy contract to provide one detention bed for use of juvenile court at the Tennessee Valley Juvenile Detention Facility beginning October the 1st of 2020 through September the 30th of 2021 without a cost to the county. Any discussion with that? Jason, aren't you on it board or something?
I am.
Okay. I was thinking you was.
I was just thinking I think I got a meeting Wednesday.
Okay. Any more discussion with that? All right. Third on agenda would be to approve preliminary engineering and construction agreement with ALDOT for widening, striping, signage and safety improvements at the East Ferry Road on the curve north of Suffolk Creek, which all the costs are listed there. The fair, you know, be $20,500 and a $2,277, $78, which this was all firstly approved the 12/17 of 18. And then the second part of it is to come construction agreement for ALDOT project, the HRR fund of the 420/250, original approved on the 8/17 of 2020, which a triple R funding of $220,071.60 with a county part of it of $24,452.40 of a grand total of $244,524. Any discussion with that? I know this is in your district, but any discussion with that?
Yeah, so this won't be let...
This was... This is to clear up some clerical issues with the other agreements. They typically do an agreement that encompasses preliminary engineering and construction all in one because the way it's been processed through two different funds, it didn't get done that way, but it is in the September letting, so it will be let the last Friday of this month. And so I specifically asked if it would remain in the letting because I couldn't get it on the meeting quick enough. And once I was told and they said that that's fine, it will stay in the letting, so.
When's the date be in the letting? When's the timeframe? There's usually an end date, right? That they got to do complete construction before they...
Oh, it'll be... It'll take six to eight weeks for the DOT to process the agreements. And then it'll be, then I think it's a 20-day construction schedule, 20 working days whether permitted, so.
Okay. Any more discussion with that? All right. Fourth on here would be approved agreement with the City of Athens effective October the 1st of 2020 until September the 30th of 2023 for housing and services to be provided for the city prisoners at the Limestone County Jail. Any discussion with that? All righty. Fifth on the agenda will be to approve agreement with traffic, with tracking solutions for electronic monitoring services, ankle monitoring for juveniles referred by the Limestone County Juvenile Court beginning October the 1st of 2020 and ending September the 30th of 2021, funded by the Alabama Department of Youth Services Grant. Any discussion with that? All righty. Next on here will be number six will be to approve agreement for services with Katie Henson beginning October the 1st of 2020 and ending October the 30th of 2021 to community services for juvenile assistance through the Limestone County Juvenile Courts, funded by the Alabama Department of Youth Services Grant for 30 hours per week at $16.15 an hour. Any discussion with that? All right. No discussion with that. Number seven would be to approve grant agreement with Alabama Department of Youth Services for the juvenile detention diversion program for physical year 21 in the amount of $47,840 with no match required. Any discussion with that? All righty. On number eight is approved memorandum of understanding with the Family Life Centers Incorporated to provide substance abuse treatment and related services for juveniles referred by the Limestone County Juvenile Court beginning October the 1st of 2020 and ending September the 30th of 2021, provided by the Alabama Department of Youth Services Grant at $1,250 per month. Any discussion with that one? All right. Number nine will be to approve agreement with the North Alabama Highway Safety Office for overtime, traffic studies, enforcement from October the 1st of 2020 through September the 30th of 2021. Any discussion with that? All right. Number 10 will be to approve a DECA recreational trails program grant extension to March the 31st of 2021. This extension is to complete the closeout documents and reimbursement, some reallocated to related, relative, I'm sorry about that, retroactive to September the 15th of 2020. Any discussion with that? I'm getting tongue-tied here.
Is that the Richard Martin?
Yeah, the Richard Martin Trails. We're done with all the work. We just hadn't got all of the paperwork completed and to get reimbursed for everything, so just need a little time on all the... Sony need a little time on all the getting everything fixed up. Any more discussion with that? All right. Number 11 will be to approve termination of the Laser fabs Incorporated, North Alabama Laser fabs Incorporated, abatement agreement which was made on October the 15th of 2018 and approve a new tax abatement agreement. And do you have anything with that, Bethany?
I'll be right back.
Well, I will kind of explain what we're doing here.
Sure.
I was approached by Greg Weatherford of with the North Alabama Laser Fab about possibly giving him a tax abatement for some additional equipment that he needs for some contracts that are coming up that he has an opportunity for. In talking with him about that, we, I realized that he had another, another kind of recent request that he had made of y'all and was approved for a tax abatement for $1.5 million for a piece of equipment. And when asked about that and talking with the Department of Revenue, realized that he had never taken advantage of that other tax abatement because he did not purchase that piece of equipment because that contract, he did not get that contract. And so in talking to the Department of Revenue and with Mark Macklin, we decided that the best thing to do was to retract the one he had before and just get it off the books, if you will, and then request a new tax abatement for this equipment that he's wanting to install now. So he's ready to go with the new equipment. He's got the contract ready. He's got the equipment ready to purchase. In fact, he's going to purchase it tomorrow if we can get it approved today. And he will be adding jobs. He expects to hire at least seven people over the next three years. He thinks it'll be more like 10, but I told him to be sure and get, you know, the number that he was sure of. So everything is in here as far as the tax abatements. Of course, it's everything noneducational. He'll be paying for the educational.
All right. That's good. Thank you, Bethany.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any questions for Bethany?
I'll just mention that Greg Weatherford rents my land for cattle and so I have a financial relationship to avoid any appearance of conflict of interest. I'll recuse myself on this. I'll mention that in the regular meeting too.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Any more discussion with the abatement? All righty. No more discussion. Moving on with under budget revisions here, we will be transferring $416,793.81, which is all listed there for the finish up our Alabama rebuild and district projects we're a little short on. Any discussion with that?
You want to make any comment?
It's to cover unrealized revenue because of few issues and then some overruns. There were some overruns because of changes in contract amounts between when I did the estimate versus when the work was completed. So our new contracts went into place between that period of time, so there were some overruns on that and then there was also some revenues that didn't come in due to a couple of issues between the COVID and some other things. So that's the reason for the difference.
So these funds are coming from?
General fund.
General fund.
Yep. Be transferred out of the general fund to go to the roads. Any more discussion? All right. No more discussion. We'll move on. Under board appointments, we'll reappoint Colin Daly to the Solid Waste Disposal Authority term ending in November the 30th of 2023. Now, let's go ahead and read off the other one. The other would be to appoint Mark Massey to the Solid Waste Disposal Fund, I mean Authority, term beginning November the 16th of 2020 and ending on November the 30th of 2023. Any discussion with either one of those board appointments?
You got time for it?
As long as Colin keeps me on schedule, I can be there.
All right.
Yeah.
Generally speaking, we don't meet but quarterly or biannually or something to that effect. But anyways, any more discussion with either one of those? All righty. No discussion, we'll move on. Under award of bids, we'll approve a negotiated price for food bag program for the council and agents. We did not receive a bid on this, so she'll just have to negotiate price with local grocery stores. Any more discussion with that? All righty. No more discussion with that. Then under personnel action, we'll hire Amy Abercrombie as a part-time school resource officer pending a drug screening. Any discussion with her? All righty. Second on here, we'll hire Justin Graves as a deputy pending a drug screening. Any discussion with him? All right. Number three will be to hire Jimmy Bryant Moss as a temporary part-time engineering assistant to deal with federal grants, retroactive will be September the 15th of 2020. Any discussion with that? And Mark might touch on that in a minute.
That a part-time engineering assistant that you approved exactly in the last meeting, so this would allow me to take the FEMA projects off and he began some work for me last week, so just to make everything, make everything on the up and up. That's the reason for the retroactive, so he did start doing some research and started sitting in on meetings with me last week.
All right. Any more discussion with that? No more discussion with that. We'll move on to approved job description for the bookkeeper administrative clerk at the Community Corrections and add to the staffing plan. Any discussion with that? All righty. No discussion with that. Number five will be to hire Myra Peck as a part-time bookkeeper administrative clerk at the Community Corrections effective October the 1st of 2020. Any discussion with that? All right. No discussion with that. Number six will be to approve job description for chief financial officer and replace accounting position on a staffing plan. And this here is Emily's job. It's nothing to, no change in action. We're just changing this, we're just cleaning up job descriptions while we're making some job changes. We're just changing job descriptions. We actually have one more. We'd sent off Auburn for a study and they didn't get it back, so we'll probably have another one on there next week. It's just around the office there. Any discussion with that? No discussion with that. Number seven would be to amend job duties in the job description for commission clerk. And this is the job that Kay has and we're just adding some other duties to it while we're getting ready to advertise for that job. Any discussion with that? All righty. No discussion with that. Number eight will be to approve the staffing plan effective October the 1st of 2020. Does anybody have a discussion with the staffing plan for the year? All right. Number nine will be to approve pay scale effective October the 1st of 2020 to be reflect a 2% cost of living adjustment. Any discussion with number nine?
No, but I need to add a number 10.
Yeah, yes, right. You got number 10 to add.
To add to transfer Dustin Gatlin from District 1 to District 2 as a operator 3.
All right. Any discussion with that transfer? All right. No discussion with Dustin. We'll move on to merit increases. Anybody have any discussion with anybody on the merit increases? All right. No discussion with none of the body on the merit increase, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Massey, the engineer.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've got two subdivisions. There's three on here. East Limestone Acres replaids Block 13 due to some deed issues. The property owner's getting some, getting some information and some advice from his attorney before he continues with that, so I'd like to move that into the October 5th meeting. But for this meeting, Jones Springs, Phase 1, this is a major, it'll be for final, it's 37 lots in District 2, 200 feet north of Pepper Road on west side of Jones Road and then Menifee Acres subdivision. This is minor, so it's preliminary and final, three lots in District 2, east side of Menifee Road, south of Nick Davis, and that's all.
So we're scratching East Limestone Acres, right?
Correct.
All righty. Any discussion with either one of the, any one of the two subdivisions? Is Mark presenting? All right. No discussion. We'll move on to other business. Be number one on here will be to give Pam Carter the authority to approve department budget revisions as necessary for the end of the year proceedings. Do anybody have any questions for that? All right. No question with that. Number two will be to approve the physical year 2020/21 budget. Any discussion with the budget anywhere? All right. No discussion with the budget. We'll move on to number three on here would be to approve to sell the following pieces of equipment on GovDeals out of District 3, which is a 85 FT 8,000 truck. Any discussion with that? All right. No discussion with that. I have no schedule of public hearing. Report officers, Commissioner Sammett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to mention right quick, you know, our district shed sits on I-65 out there and the other day I was, you couldn't have gone out last week. There was utility vehicles running south all last week, all day long, and it just, it's just impressive, it's so impressive to see folks want to help, you know, for the devastation that we've had down south, along with our local people. Every time you turn the news on, you got somebody going south and I just, I couldn't believe it all last week. I mean, vehicles from utility crews from Ohio, I'm sure, you know, Michigan, Kentucky, Tennessee. I don't know what kind of program they've got set up, but it's, it's real impressive to see how help falls out when you got a disaster like that. But I just wanted to mention it, I don't know what you do for these folks, you know, that, that give themselves like that because they get away from their families and all and I'm sure do a lot of this on their own, but I just wanted to mention that. But I just wanted to mention that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sammett. Commissioner Turner?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. Commissioner Black?
I don't have anything.
Thank you, Commissioner Black. Commissioner Harrison?
I'll mention mine during the regular meeting.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Like Commissioner Sammett said, I want everybody to remember our fellow commissioners and our neighbors to the south through all this cleaning up after the math of storm. And with all that, we'll recess until 10:00 a.m. Thank y'all.